Invitation from Councilman Curtis, followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand.
Please pray with me. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for cooler temperatures and for the long awaited arrival of fall into northeast Texas. We're reminded this week to be thankful for peace in our country as we see a war break out in Israel. We pray for a swift resolution of that war. Pray for that you safeguard civilians in that country and also watch over our armed personnel that are moving into that area. They may be brought back safely to their family and loved ones. Lord, we ask for your wisdom in making decisions today. We ask for your health and your protection over our policemen, firemen, and city staff as they carry out their duties today. And we ask for your blessings on the city of Tyler. We ask all these names in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with the minutes from the September 13th, 2023 City Council meeting.
Moved to approve. Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Winn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Julie, A1.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Morning.
So I'm really pleased to be before you today to present this award. During the 2023 Texas Municipal League Annual Conference in Dallas, the city of Tyler received the Municipal Excellence Award in Communications Programs for Cities Over 25,000 in Population. So that's comparable to the Austins, the Dallases, and the Houston's of Texas. The award recognized the city of Tyler for our citywide editorial process. This process encapsulates all departments' marketing campaigns and ties actions to concrete deliverables. The communication team meets with each department annually to identify marketing goals and develops a comprehensive work plan with check-ins and updates throughout the year. Since the implementation of this process, the city's content creation has increased by 72%. Crisis communication has improved, and city and Tyler employees outside of the communications team have been empowered to become communication best practice ambassadors to their departments, improving cross collaboration and teamwork throughout the organization. We have also presented our process at several conferences, both in Texas and nationally, and have provided coaching to other cities looking to implement a similar program. And I have to stress, this award would not be possible without the many liaisons that we have worked with throughout the city departments. The city of Tyler was also this year a top-three finalist in the public works category for Keep Tyler Beautiful's Park Restroom Murals. Keep Tyler Beautiful has made it a mission to create art in overlooked areas and bring beauty to blight. In 2019, Keep Tyler Beautiful started a program to transform park bathrooms and storage areas into elaborate works of art, from primary colors to muted and delicate azaleas. Each is themed to match their location, and the goal is to install at least one beautiful piece of art in each of the city's 28 city parks. At this time, we request that the city council accept the 2023 Texas Municipal Excellence Award, and we would like you to come down and join us for a photo. And I'd like to invite Keep Tyler Beautiful, and if you are a communication liaison with the city of Tyler, please join us.
So Kedrick, I hope you can make this presentation as thrilling as the award.
I'm actually, sorry to have to do this. Good morning, Mayor and Council. You have item P1 before you, and basically what this is, is this is a presentation, so there's no action required on this. But we wanted to talk to you all about issuing approximately $65 million in water utility bonds. And in your cover memo, I've got the projects listed out that we're planning to do over FY '24, and so these bond funds will be needed to fund those projects. We have a portion of the projects, about $75 million worth of projects, and about 11 is going to be funded through cash, and the other remainder will be through bond issues. There's two different categories. We've got consent decree or regulatory bond issue, and then we've got non-regulatory bond issues that we've got before you all. And I've got Steven Adams here today. He's our financial advisor, and Paul Jason, I think Paul is actually doing the presentation today. He's going to go through the details on the financing and kind of give you an idea of what's to come and talk a little bit about the timeline. So having said that, I'll turn it over to Paul.
Thank you, Kedrick. Good morning, Mayor, Council, and staff. Again, I think y'all know Steven Adams, my partner, very well. Thank you for giving, having the opportunity to give you an update on this upcoming issue. Kedrick covered a lot of stuff. This is not going to be as exciting, I'll tell you that, Mayor. Sorry. So the 11 million in cash, that's an important component for the city to have that at their disposal to contribute. So we've got the 30 million for the regulatory and the 35 for general system or non-regulatory. This is structured with a 30-year amortization. Closing is anticipated early December. We do have some cushion in these numbers. AA+ is what we're using. That's a really good rating for the city. We think that rating will be maintained. A lot of information in here. I'll go to page two. This is all the city's debt. We'll want to make note that the last four bond issues that the city sold were less than 2.7%. So the city was able to sell a number of debt issues and capitalize in a low-rate environment. As you'll see on the next page, rates are projected to be around 5%. Rates have gone up. You've been following the Treasury rates and mortgage rates. Thankful for your good credit rating. We expect this to be well received in the market. A lot of numbers on this slide, but basically what we do is we look at your 22 audit. This does not factor in any future rate increases or the future debt. We're just looking at this debt issue in isolation. This issue does cover, there's revenues to cover this debt at roughly 1.4x, which is an important metric for the rating agencies. Again, this is level debt. The debt drops off. If I go back to the previous, let's see here, I'm ripping through this too fast, Kedrick, here. This slide, you can see the debt drops off pretty significantly. We know there's future bond issues anticipated. And then wanted to cover the sources and uses. Kedrick mentioned that the projects are more than 65 because of the cash contribution. We've got all the cost of issuance in here, so we're looking at roughly $65,300,000. Timeline, wanted to go over this with you. Again, this is just an information item. We wanted to get all the questions answered the best we could at this meeting, and then come back to the council in November at your November 7th meeting. We'll go through the rating process. We have that set up, you know, with Ed and Kedrick. Those that want to participate for Monday, the 16th, will get on a rating call, go over this debt issue as well as all the proposed future debt, and then hopefully get our rating affirmed at AA+. Take bids, set rates on November 7th, and then come back to this council with the final rate on November 8th, and then close on December 6th is our targeted closing. Overall, if you look at this chart, goes back pretty good ways. You can see the red line is where we are currently. Rates historically have been quite a bit higher. Again, the city was able to capitalize on a low-rate environment the last four or five years and sell quite a bit of debt. So overall, we're happy to answer any questions, and thanks for giving us the opportunity to give you an update.
Any questions for Paul? No. Go ahead. To borrow 65 million bucks is not very exciting. But the one thing that we all realize is that in 2017, when we entered the consent decree, we took on the obligation, or we were told to take on the obligation of repairing the sewer system, and with a total cost of over $250 million. So this is not something that we're choosing to do. It's something that we need to do. Is it because it was neglected for too long? You know, who knows? There's no finger pointing, but it's something that needs to be fixed now. So.
And the same with the water system.
Same with the water. So here we are. So any questions for Paul or Steven or Kedrick?
I'd just like to take a moment because I'm new to council, but to commend the folks that have come before us to enable us to take out a loan like this with the rates like it is for the financial management that's gone on, the discipline that's been through the years, so that we can do this. So that's, you know, a lot of municipalities just can't do this. So thank all of y'all.
All right, anybody want to make a motion? I guess that's just a presentation. Thank you for the presentation. Great. Russ, P2.
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
I wish mine was not as boring as Kedrick, but it's okay. This has been something we've been working on for several months, and then this one additional for this presentation is to have y'all consider receiving this presentation. Because from our budget process, y'all had tabled the transit rate increase and the reduction in service for us to come back and make a formal presentation of different ideas. And every time we go to the table, there are different ideas to consider. The agencies across the state are doing quite a few different things, and it'd be nice if we were all on the same page. It would help standardize things, but that's not how it works. But we're trying to find the best practices. With a little bit of history, '93 to 2007, Tyler Transit was operated by First Transit Incorporated, and we took over in 2007 to operate all of transit. And '93 was the last known fare increase for paratransit operations. I stopped there for a second. One of the things that, when we've had our public hearings, and we've had three public hearings, and the third was a cause of effect of what the FTA had asked us to do is to make sure we include additional coverage for our Hispanic community as far as notices were given out, and we did that. And that helped us cover all the boundaries there. Part of the questions were why we would have a rate increase now in not all these years. Management has, to me, has done a great job of maintaining by not going up on the rates because we've kept it in check, kept it in balance. And as we go a little further on the next slide, in this portion, you'll see some things that caused the rates to go up just in a matter of just a one or two-year process. 2020, the CARES Act came in and paid for all our local match funds. There are some little portions that were in there, as you'll see in just a second, that we did pay, but was significantly nothing compared to year to year. '21, we did the route study, added a sixth route, which is called Campus Connect. That added about $312,000 to the Tyler transit budget. It removed two bus drivers without adding bus drivers, moved them over to fixed route, which took it away from our overflow contract. So our overflow contract went up in cost. And so, in addition to that additional funds there, you had 2021, we had the pay rate study. We implemented 100% of it, and that added almost $700,000 to the budget. And then the fuel maintenance increase that we've seen, and we survived 2008. Make note of that. Fuel increases were crazy back then, but we survived it, and that's not really the major. But when you put all these things together, it does bring us to the two-year increase all at one time when the care funds ran out, $1.2 million, to continue to operate our transit operations. Local match, we are funded by FTA. We're funded by Techs dot. We do gain revenue from advertisements, and occasionally we'll see some donations come in. But just taking a snapshot of looking at our history previous to COVID and during that period of time, and we submitted the budget as a local match was going to be about $750,000. But this current year, we have one more invoice probably to pay, and so that 663 will be pretty close to that 744. We're on track, and that invoice would be the overflow contract. And so that just kind of gives you an idea where we're even standing today. Part of the, just to give you some good points, we've got some approved ADA grant projects that we brought before y'all in previous councils' consent agendas, and these are vans that are purchased, software that's being purchased, and these are all TDC local funded. So TDCs are the toll credits that we receive from the state, and so it's 100% funding, and it's capital purchases. And so we don't have to go into local taxpayer money to pay for any of those types of equipment. Those are some of the things we've got coming. And part of this is the need that we have been, for the probably last three years, we've been without some software on our fixed route to help track the buses and to have data to tell us where people are getting on and off the buses. So some of this will help with that. We'll have some data that'll help, software that'll help us calculate where everybody is getting on the bus, where they're getting off the bus, and that'll help us with efficiencies and to where if we need to chip away at a route or remove some stops and put some stops at some different locations because of demand. And so we're looking at those things. These are, one of the grants we approved earlier in this year was the 5310 grant, and this is where bus stops have been a problem for a while, and we're getting some funding. This is just a preliminary design. Fitzpatrick is helping us with this, and this isn't a final rendition. The one to the left is the, you would see is what the rendition will look like. The one in the middle is currently what we have. Just kind of putting it out there gives it a little bit more. And it's about the same kind of cost as if I go and buy one and have all the concrete done. The estimated cost is about $20,000 to come in, do new concrete, get everything done. So we're trying to put some more life into them and hopefully get sponsorships, and that offsets local match at that same time. But this is funded 100%. This is kind of what it would look like at Bergfield. Texas College, we're trying to do themes with what the organizations that are in those areas, and the others would be like UT Hospital and would go in that area. This grant is one that we're in the process of, and this is pie in the sky because we have to look at it. That doesn't mean we get it, but we might get something, and we might not get nothing. But it's still something that would help us with microtransit demand response. It's about a $2 million first year, Phase 1 and Phase 2. They would give you up to three years worth of $15 million of operational funds. And so, nothing ties us to it. They're the parent company to FTA. They're above FTA. So this is a grant that we have not seen before, and so we've been exploring further out into the, for grant processes to see what else that we can do to help with a lot of our situation. And our understanding is this will cover a lot of things we're dealing with today. And so it may be that we would help us get down the road, help us understand microtransit better, because that is industry. And I'll kind of talk about that because in order to go a little further into this presentation, you've got to understand microtransit. Technically, it is a form of transportation. It's no different. Paratransit is a form of transportation. Fixed route is a form. Microtransit, they just give it, that's the newest name, and the industry's moving that way. Tulsa, Oklahoma has moved into that. Arlington went into that. Now, you go into Arlington, they had a choice, because they're bigger than us, but they had a choice of light rail, and they went with microtransit because light rail was about $50 million a mile. So if you ever hear anybody say about some of these railroad tracks that we might have that we want to utilize, keep in mind that that's a cost in the Dallas area. So light rail in Tyler is going to have to have some different grant funding, I think. With microtransit, there's what's called curb-to-curb. It's very similar to our paratransit. It's where I would go, a caller would make a call and go to their house to pick them up, or go wherever they're at to pick them up. And we're not looking at this object because of the cost, because that would just be paratransit all over the city, and we're just not prepared for that type of cost at this time. Microtransit, we have bus points where we currently have our routes. Wherever there's a bus stop, our implementation plan would go to wherever there's a bus stop. A rider can say, "I am there," and they can plan their route, get on the app, and we would send a bus at that time to pick them up. And it would be a smaller bus, similar to what we showed you earlier on the screen of those purchases. There are smaller buses, and then take them to either the nearest transfer point, or possibly if it's not that far from where they're going, they could just take them off to that spot. And so it changes a little bit of it, but it actually gives better time. Our biggest problem with, as I'll get into in a little bit too, is our underutilized routes. The Campus Connect is just not really taking off like they thought it would because students don't want to wait 45 minutes to an hour to get to school. And so without adding more buses and more cost, that's what we'd be staring at. The thing with microtransit, and what we really want to look at doing is taking that to work with our fixed route, work with our paratransit, co-mingle it to where it may be a paratransit route, but I can pick up a microtransit person that does the request, and we can put them on that, and that's just a software connection, and it just streamlines it. We already have the base portion of the software. There's some added costs that we have to look at, which will be funded with our earlier grants that I talked to you about. And so with that, that's the interesting part. And again, we don't have data for that. We have an idea of it, and that's why we want to do pilots, and we want to do that approach to it, is take those current routes, turn them into pilot routes of microtransit, run them the way we want to do them, but do them right, and see what five months, once we implement, we have six months, but we want to look at it in five months, because if we go past six months, we own it. We have to stick with it without going through public comment, making a change, all those type of things. And so that's kind of that roundabout. This is really hard for us to see visually. You probably can see it better on your screen, but that's our mapping of the city of the different routes. The colors used to be a lot darker and easier for me to see, but that may have been years ago, too. I'm not sure. But some of the Campus Connect is, if you look in the bottom, well, it's not about midways to the left in the screen, is the one that we are looking at taking that one, and then it carries over, it goes to West Campus and goes over to TJC, and then to UT has turned that one into a microtransit operation. The South Tyler Route, which is down at the very bottom, that goes down into Cumberland. It's a very short one, but it's the same, especially on Saturday, it's the same underutilized route, calculation-wise, and take that one and make that a microtransit operation also, or change how we do the fixed route portion. So there's some objects that we're looking at trying to do on that. We won't discontinue service. It's just change the service and follow a plan that's out there for us to model. We've been looking at other cities. We've been talking to them, and it's been interesting how it goes. Some of the cost savings that we've come up with, and this is something, this is almost like a moving target, because every day there's something new that comes up that we can do differently that saves money. And with this whole plan was not to change anything with paratransit. Whatever we did with fixed route, by law, we have to run paratransit. The first bullet point would be, again, we talked a little bit about it, canceling Route 21's Campus Connect and Route 12, which is the South Tyler Route completely, Monday through Saturday. And there's that savings there of 134, 330. Council Route 11, Medical District, on Saturday only. Doesn't save a lot. This is not manpower savings. This is just fuel and maintenance savings, but it starts adding up after a little bit. And the reason on that is a lot of, when I talk to the bus drivers, but again, I'd like to have data to look at, not just word of mouth, but the bus drivers are telling me they're mostly transfer points, people taking a cut through because it's a quicker route to get to the next transfer. And so we feel like that would probably eliminate a lot of the need of that on Saturday by having some of the alternate connections. Microtransit 21 Campus Connect, and these can be taken away, subtracted, but we feel like this is the best model at the moment in time that we're looking at. Route 21 Campus Connect, Route 12, South Tyler, Monday through Friday. Taking it to microtransit, well, the reason why it's in red is because I have to put back in the fuel savings, because we lost fuel savings. Anytime you run microtransit, there is a savings. Industry tells us 10% to 30%, and that's coming from salesmen, so I'm going to leave it at the fact that we would like to find out first and not just jump into that as a total bill to sell. Again, talking about future, if all these routes, Route 21 and 12 prove the way we think they will, is when we evaluate the five months after starting, is possibly cancel a third, or a larger one, which would be the, just consider what the other routes would be to do, and again, change it over to microtransit operation and make it a pilot. With the two fixed route changes, you move two drivers back to PT, paratransit, which lessens our overflow contract by almost $300,000. And if we freeze that position, I actually believe we would save more money by not freezing it, after looking at more data even yesterday. But this is one of the options to look at, but not wanting to give it up because it's hard for me to get that back from Ed when I need that position back. But the total potential savings is there, that $470,000. One item that I looked at, we looked at trying to change, other cities have lesser time on routes. Right now, currently. Right now, currently, we run Monday through Friday, eight to nine. And then on Saturday, I'm, I back up, let me sorry. Currently, we run 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 AM to 6:00 on Saturdays. It's taking an hour off each day, does not save a lot of money. It's just fuel savings. But there's overtime that we would be looking at potentially that, that would help us out in other ways. Not a lot there, but it's something for consideration.
Russ, can you go back to that?
Let me back.
Last slide?
This one?
One before.
There you go.
So is this, all these numbers, is this just paratransit or is this paratransit and fixed route?
That's paratransit and fixed route.
So the cancel, I understand the Campus Connect.
Mostly fixed route.
Pardon me?
It is mostly fixed route though.
So the Route 12, South Tyler, is that the one that goes out to Cumberland?
Yes, sir.
And you're talking about canceling that one?
We would cancel it and use microtransit. So we would, we, the ridership is, and I'm going to show you a slide, the ridership is rather low for that one little bus or that one point. And, and then we could also look at how we want to adjust it. And we don't want to kill it because we have the VA clinic down there that's used heavily. And we, so the whole point is not to reduce service, it is use that one as a model for the microtransit, because it's a lot less service on a daily basis. And to eliminate just circle driving, and there's other savings when we, when we're not driving, and those are other unrealized savings. Your liabilities go lower, you're not, you know, the chances of accidents. I could bring you up so many different things where our drivers, yes, our drivers do make mistakes when they're driving in circles after a while, it does wear and tear on, on you. But then you've got people that don't respect the bus. They come right in front of them, cut them off and to get into a, to get into the place they want to be on Broadway. And so there's, sometimes it causes racing to get around a bus, because they don't want to get behind it just like a school bus. And so there's a lot of liability savings that we look at in, in that regard too.
So if you eliminate the South Tyler Route for three or four months and try the microtransit, it doesn't work? I guess you can't go over the six month period, but, and it, and it doesn't work?
It doesn't work. We just go right back to what we were doing, because I think eliminating would be the worst case scenario again. I just, I don't think that would be beneficial. One, you've got some business opportunities out there, which is part of getting people to buy products, sales tax. So we don't want to just shut that off. I, I think that's, that would put a nail in our foot if we did that.
Okay, good.
This is something of old 2012, and I'm, I'm hearing candy wrappers over there from Deborah, but we talked about this one. This one is something we need to go back and revisit, because there is some, there are a lot of stakeholders involved in this one that we need to communicate with. We used to, back in 2011, 2012, we only worked paratransit three quarter mile off of a fixed route. And, and I'll show you a map of what that looks like in just a second. And with that, it didn't eliminate service for people, it just moved them over to a different funding with, with, with the, in this case, it'd be like GoBus would, would operate it. But like I said, we need to bring all stakeholders in to talk about that one and, and what does that mean? And so y'all would understand that, because it would not, it would not remove service. Well, there was a, one thing that we wanted, was brought up at probably one of the first or second meetings was that everybody, there were several that were upset that we took away Saturday service. We've never offered a Saturday, or Sunday service. We've never offered a Sunday service. It was the county through MDMA, they had, they had funding that paid for Sunday pickup for paratransit. And that was par, that was their operation. We, it wasn't City Tyler's operation at all. And so, but it confused people, because it's still a bus in Tyler picking them up. And they thought that was us and that, that was not our operation at all. And it's, it was a good service, but the funds ran out, and that's why that stopped. And that's what we don't want to do. Even if you're looking at $15 million for three years, you don't want to build up something that causes us to fail, which is what technically cares that money. It was great having it, because you know, we were revenue loss, but it, it causes failure moments when you, when you don't consider those things. The map on the left kind of give you an idea, city limits to the right, all those outside, probably not all the city, but it's the best I've got since we only operate certain portions. What's in the gray is what we, if we went to a three quarter mile, you see the little black dots that are on the outside in the lighter area, that's the effect. And it, you look at it, it doesn't mean that much, but the way our city is growing in, in the future, it could start beginning to be more, because what we have done since 2012, we've added over 10,000 additional paratransit routes per year. And under FDA, FDA's guidelines, we are at a point where we cannot end service because of capacity. We could say all day long, we don't have enough money for buses, we don't have enough money for drivers, but FDA would find that as a violation to say we can't do something because of capacity. So we have to be looking proactively in the future, even though we've been managing things I think well, just this got a one, two punch, you know, in a couple of quick years. And so that's the, the portion of, of what we're dealing with today. The phase rate increase option was considerably less, it'd be 45 in a Phase One. And, and I'm going to give you some data for what we've done in looking at other cities across, and we've got, taking it from $1.50 to $2.50 increase. And then your, for your park, for your paratransit, fixed route, one way is a dollar, proposed $1.50. And these can be adjusted, it just, it means the money goes down or goes up. And so I think with $45,000 revenue increase, it's, it's for the first year phase and then the second year phase, those are things we can do or not do, or maybe see if we can improve. And so I feel like there's still a lot of un, underutilized thoughts on this microtransit, because we don't know the, what is it going to affect us, how much savings will actually be there. And so looking at this proposal, this only did a, just a little bit of change and, and you go into what the options really mean.
Russ, can you back up again?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
When you show the rate increase from $1.50 to $2 and so on, can you just tell, do you remember in the budget process that 1.50 was going to go to what and the?
Yes, sir. I, I brought that one for, it was going to go from 1 to 2 for the fixed route, just the one-way tickets. The paratransit, it was going from 1.50 to 4 because of the, the state allowing those, that was the maximum that you could do. And an all-day pass was going from 2 to 4 on the, on the fixed route, just to keep it with what we've got in line. The other, there's, there's other things that'll be on a, based upon percentage, like if they buy multiple fares, I didn't put all that up, but it's going to be based on the same criteria. It won't be as high as what we did in the, in that last proposal at all. And so I do have a city comparison. I didn't have it as a, as a bullet point to give you. Several cities, and this comes under small urban agency across, and you can be, anything under 200,000 is considered small, so, and we're right there at the 109 area. And a lot of the, the state average, I want to give you the state average right away, and I can ask, you'll give you other areas too, but a one-way is $1.46, a day pass is, the average is 2.88, paratransit is 2.30. That's taking all the urban agencies and giving you an average. What are they, the small urban? Longview, our closest neighbor, at 82,000 citizens, a one-way is $1.25, paratransit is 2.50. Going out to Temple is another city that's comparable, how we do business, but they're $1 for one-way and paratransit $2. We see a lot of, Waco is another city that we utilize is in a lot of different ways. Waco's one-way is $1.50, their paratransit's $3. And so it, it's really all over the board. And some cities just do not offer, they have, some of them don't even have routes. They may have one route in the city or two, they're just not, we have six right now, we used to have five. And, and so when you, when you add that many routes, you're starting to, your costs do go up. And so if we in the future, you know, question came up, why don't we have one around the loop? Well, I strongly have suggested that in our, but it's, it's called funding. And it just means I either give, I pull from somewhere to move it there, and then I do nothing with the savings. And so if we add something like that, it kills it. With microtransit, we feel like that that might be the possibility of what other cities are doing. And that's, that's our hope, is to discover what microtransit actually does, so that I can, I can give you statistics and, and move forward with some things in the future and not just be semi-blind, because our, our city is made up diff, if you go to any other city in the state of Texas, the roads are different, connections are different. So every variable that we have is not going to be the same. So it's hard to really compare some of those things.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one question in regards to the rates. Do we offer monthly options for a reduced rate?
We do. There's a percentage that we do a discount. And one thing that we also do currently is on our paratransit route, our paratransit customers, we, we offer free fixed route. There's no charge for fixed route. Other cities don't do that. And so to, and so we, we do that as encouraging them to use fixed route, but at the same time, that's, that is a loss in revenue if you really look at it that way, but it's a great benefit to keep doing it that way. And so, so if I'm a paratransit customer and I can manage the, the route system, fixed route, well, it's free. And there is a half fare. If somebody comes in that don't qualify, then it's a half fare. It's whatever the, whatever the fare is, it's half of that. And so in military veterans, same thing, it's a half fare. But if you do qualify for paratransit, it's free on, under our system. And that's, you know, that's something we, we haven't put into 100% to, to make a change on that even, because it would, it'd be a ramification there too.
Thank you.
Okay. Just so I, I want to make sure I'm clear on the paratransit.
Yes.
Because it's like a lot of the input at the public hearings was on that. So the way that, that in the budget presentation, it was going to go up from 1.50 to $4.
Yes, sir.
And that's each way?
That's correct.
So that's $8 total.
$8.
So what's your proposal for paratransit would be, it would go from 1.50 to 2 in the first year? So it'd be $4 for a round trip?
That's correct.
And next year, it would be $5 for a round trip?
Yes.
So you're taking it from $8 to $4 this year and $5 next year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One of the other things that, that I, I had Melissa do for us when, that's over these portions, Melissa Medina, I had her take, go back from 93 to, to current date, what is CPI? What would it mean if we utilized CPI? For this year alone, it would be, based on those calculations, it, it should be 3.15. And we've kept it at that $1.50. And so not following, and we don't always do that around, in, in, through the years on any, a lot of our areas. We don't always do CPI. We do based upon what does it cost and, and take care of that away. And it's, there is a, something to be measured in that area also. But really, the, let me make sure, just, yeah, I wanted to give you the ridership numbers. I, I can't read those, I got it on another piece of paper, but that, I hope y'all can. And, but the, the big, the big one is that I'm looking at is down there on the right is the, as you can see, the South Tyler's 13, 270, and Campus Connect 16, 747. That one is by far, those two are the, by far the lowest utilized. And that's, that's our attack mechanism, is to look at those, how we can still serve them, but do it better. And, and then on, again, on Saturday, just eliminate some of those and restructure how we do them and to be able to pick people up, get them down there, take the, the Broadway route down further and go that direction. So this, this presentation is, you've asked questions already, and that's good, because it helps me to stay focused with you on it. But my, my thoughts on this is the, and I appreciate what counsel has done in, as far as taking this serious, because we are dealing with people that are on fixed incomes or, or no income. And, and so it's just a matter of, of trying to look at the big picture, but we still got to try to operate a business and fund it.
Any questions or comments for Russ?
Yeah, I would say, first of all, good presentation. And, and that's what I would want to say, is that anything that we do like this as a city, unless we just say that service is going to be absolutely free to the user, we're going to, we're going to set some percentage and say the user is going to fund this much of the cost of that service. And, you know, maybe back in 93, that was the wrong percentage, I don't know, but it was a percentage. And, you know, no, no business can survive going 30 years without changing their price. I mean, they would go out of business. So that service still had to get paid for, it just got pulled from other areas, you know, some streets didn't get fixed, whatever, whatever else it comes from. So, you know, I, I think you're right. We, we want to make sure we're fair to the users of this service, but I don't think fair is, you know, no increase for forever. But I also think we ought to be vigilant going forward, that we don't fall into that trap again, and let it happen again, because it's hard to have that shock adjustment and pricing stuff on anybody.
Russ, I just want to thank you for the three meetings that you held and a number of people there that spoke and asked questions. I think that you got a lot of good information from that. Moving forward, this is a presentation. Many people that at the hearings thought that whatever was presented today, that's hard and fast. That's not true. You're just presenting a plan to us, because it would be an ordinance change, it would come back later, and then we would change the ordinance and the fees and routes would be set.
Yes, sir.
I've had several people contact me, once all this was brought to attention, there was going to potentially be a rate increase. If they wanted to make a donation to transit and, you know, basically just build a fund for riders that were in need or that needed some help, that would provide them free or reduced rides, how could that be structured?
There's, it's, it's doable that way, but is the way the, if I'm back up to a slide, just to show you the, the calculations, if I can remember where I put it. All right, I don't remember where I put it. Okay. We'll just pretend to know where it's at. The, there's a calculation of 50/50, where the state and FDA pays 50%, we pay 50%. There's a calculation of 80/20, where we pay 80 and state pays 20 or versa vice versa. And when a, when we get revenue, such as we get to about 24,000 from UT and, and TJC is revenue, that's 100% write-off for local match. So that's our best case scenario. A, if I donate it to purchase service by buying tickets, it's a 50/50. That's just how the state works. And, because you're still purchasing service, but that's 50% of that $1.50 went to knock off the local match. So it does help and it does help the people. And we do have a lot of agencies that come in and do that. It's not, I mean, I say a lot, there's, there's a few that come in and buy a few thousand a year, but that doesn't equate to several thousand dollars, is what we're looking at. And we, we do have someone on staff that, we didn't create a new position, but one of their attack mechanisms is to look at endowments and to look at additional grants that are hiding out there. And there's some that I could talk about, but I don't want to bring up things that I don't have facts on right now. And so those will be true cuts from local match to help with that and to help offset people's costs. And so, and we want to talk to the people that are out there that do have money. You know, you, there's, there's some places that are nonprofit that make money, and can we not work together with them? And, and so that's just things that we're going to start looking at.
And it also sounds like the microtransit is... It also sounds like the microtransit is the way of the future in the cost savings area. And that's, so running a pilot program would be, you know, a great chance for you to get data.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Russ? I don't have any cards on this item, but because I see a couple of folks out in the crowd that were at the public hearing last night and before, you know, if, if y'all want to come up and speak, this, you're more than welcome to. If you don't want to, you sure don't have to, but I want to give you that opportunity. Everybody good? Okay. Russ, thank you for the presentation.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Russ.
Theroni.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
This is a request for PMF site plan amendment, which is Plan Multi-Family Site Plan Amendment. This property is located south of the intersection of Roy Road and Villarosa Way. The applicant is requesting a site plan amendment to adjust some building layouts and also reduce the common open space area that was proposed in the site plan. Looking at the surrounding zoning, the property to the north is a part of the Villarosa development and the properties to the west and south is PUR, which is a mixture of single-family residential homes and also some undeveloped lots. Looking at the zoning to the east, it's all PCD, which is our commercial zoning and is developed with commercial uses. Future Land Use Guide, this identifies this area as townhome, garden, apartment, and this request is consistent with the Future Land Use Guide and there is no change in that. That's the aerial view of the property. Going back to some history, in 2015, the site plan that was approved had a dock park, which is 0.4 acre. You can see to the interior of the development. The applicant is proposing to remove that dock park to have more duplexes constructed in that area. In 2020, to the south of the dock park, there were, a site plan amendment was approved. It's for two-story duplexes. And the applicant right now is proposing to, just on the west side, to change the two-story to one-story so it could be consistent with the rest of the development. And that would include taking away that dock park. According to the site plan that has right now, there are three open space areas, one to the north, one to the south, and you can see up there, one to the north, one to the south, and the dock park as well. The two to the north and south would meet the Unified Development Code requirement and removing that dock park will not be any contrary to the Unified Development Code. So this proposal is consistent with our UDC. Out of the notices that was sent, none was received in favor and one in opposition to the request with a total protest calculation of 19.79%. The opposition was concerned about the fence not being constructed along their property line. The site plan does show a eight-foot tall wooden fence along that property line and that will be constructed during each phase of construction. And Planning and Zoning Commission by a 7-0 Board recommends approval.
Any questions for Theroni?
I think most of them we approve. Z1?
Second. Got a motion by Nichols, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We are going to take a recess from our city council meeting to enter into a TERS meeting. So we're recessed. We're going to play musical chairs. So the other TERS board members, if y'all can come up. All right. We're going to call the reinvestment zone number three and reinvestment zone number four and the Tyler Development Authority meeting to order. Heather.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, TERS Board members three and four. Welcome. It's been quite a few years since we all met. So our first item that we have is a request for the TERS three and four and TRA Board to receive a joint presentation on amendments to the project and finance plans for the terms of the two zones. So Zone Four, also our downtown TERS zone, is here. This is the boundary that you see before you. Here you have your palace and, I'll use this, palace here is your boundary and then Front Street. Over here, you can see that there is, let's see, Beckham and up here, Gentry, and then we have a little bit of jog up to the north. So for, for TERS three and four, we are proposing to increase the duration of the term from 2046 here for TERS four to 2060. Also, adjust the project costs through 2060. Our consultants with P3 are, we actually have Kurt McDaniel here in the audience with us and he'll come up and speak in a moment, have recalculated and updated the plan to, for those projections. And then also amend the public improvements to include downtown square maintenance as well as public safety services. That, those projects were not previously contained within the plan and we're, we're proposing to update those, to incorporate into the plan. For TERS three, you can see our boundary is in the north end. Predominantly, the activity has been on, off of Broadway, North Broadway, with the Pinnacle Development, Ed Thompson's developments that are off of North Broadway with the residence, single-family residential as well as multifamily. There is more or pending development planning, planned to occur in this area. And we're proposing to increase the duration from 2038 to 2060. And also, the projections were updated and proposing to also incorporate public improvement projects, which would include street projects, which were not previously incorporated into the plan. So, so with that, we, the next actions are to ask the board, TERS three board, to consider and review the minutes that you have before you.
Okay. I want to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 24th, 2016 for TERS number three. And seeing that maybe I was the only one that was on that board in 2016, I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
Yes. Yeah. A correction to the, to the minutes. It was 2017. And those are, are
before you in the packets.
Okay. 2017. Corrected.
Second.
Got a motion by Warren, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, am I ready for the next action item?
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion of the TERS board to approve the amended project and finance plan in term of reinvestment zone number three.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
All right. And so for our, our next actions, we have actions for TERS four, the downtown TERS board, and again, to consider the minutes from 2017.
What year were those minutes?
February 8, 2017.
What date?
February 8, 2017.
All right. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the TERS number four meeting of February the 8th, 2017.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ready to go on?
Yes, sir.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the amended project and finance plan in term of reinvestment zone number four.
Second.
All right. Motion by Haney, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then finally, asking our TRA board, which is made up of our TERS three board, to approve the 2017 minutes.
What's the date of the 2017 minutes?
February 8, 2017.
All right. I entertain a motion to approve the TRA minutes of February the 8th, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the.
TERS boards, I'm sorry, just to go back a little bit on that one. For TERS three, we need a second by a TERS three board member.
Second.
Second by Haney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We good?
Yes. Yes. I do want to go over just our next steps. Immediately following the adjournment of this meeting, the council will consider the amendments to the, the plan. And then future, we will meet with the Smith County Commissioners Court on October 24th to go over amendments to the participation agreements. And that would encompass moving the participation for TERS four, the downtown TERS, to 100% participation to match the 100% with the city and, which would help with the, the property, the maintenance in the downtown area as well as policing. And then we would again, meet with TJC Board of Trustees on November 16th to go over the participation agreements at that time.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the TERS three, four, and the TRA board. All right. We are adjourned. Thank y'all for coming up here.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. This is a request of the City Council to hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance amending the reinvestment zone number three. So we, we have two actions, a public hearing, and then following the closure of that public hearing, we would ask that the council consider adopting an ordinance.
Okay. So we're going to do a public hearing and then we're going to adopt the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. At this point, we will open up a public hearing for the ordinance amending the reinvestment zone number three. Anybody wish to come up and speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and I entertain a motion to adopt, and amend the reinvestment zone number three.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Bless you.
And then our final item is a request to hold a public hearing and consider the adoption of an ordinance for the update or the amending of reinvestment zone number four plan.
All right. And we will now open up a public hearing for the adoption of an ordinance amending reinvestment zone number four. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? Everybody's looking down? All right. No one's coming forward. So we will close the public hearing and I entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance amending reinvestment zone number four.
Second.
Motion by Haney, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Heather.
Mayor, Council, you have, Mayor, Council, you have item O1 before you. This is an annual housekeeping issue that we do on an annual basis. It's a request that City Council conduct an annual investment policy review, consider adoption of an ordinance to Tyler City Code Chapter Two, update, Chapter Two, adopting the investment policy. This is required by the Public Funds Investment Act. We have in your packet included the changes that we made to the policy. They're basically housekeeping issues. We changed the priority of some items, some position titles and font size. So having said that, we request City Council consider conducting annual investment policy review and approve an ordinance amending Tyler City Code Chapter Two, adopting the investment policy. That's it.
Any questions for Kadr?
Move to approve O1. Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kadr. Chief.
Morning, Mayor, Council. I have O2 today. It's a request that the City Council consider adoption of an ordinance amending the title of City Code Chapter Three by updating and amending provisions related to certification and assignment pay for firefighters. What this encompasses is, it's been about 13 years since we looked at certification pay. For some reason, about 13 years ago, the pay for firefighters was, was off from other public safety employees and from the general staff as well. So this just brings us, the firefighters even on the certification side of it. And on the assignment pay, the firefighters who work 24/48, they have an opportunity to get, get FLSA money by, by a section inside of FSLA. So every payday, they'll either get one of three cycles of pay. Well, the assignment pay covers those people who work a 40-hour work week. So we pull some people out of operations and work a 40-hour work week. Well, to compensate them for that loss of that FLSA money, we have to pay that through assignment pay. Well, that assignment pay hasn't been touched in a while. And so it's lagging behind. People lose money. So they're, the job, the oper, the staff jobs are a little undesirable because of that. So this, this evens that out and it allows them to make even keel with those people who are working on a truck versus those that are working in a staff position. It's just a handful of people. We don't have a lot of people working in staff position. Majority of our folk, of course, are on trucks and on engines out there. So this allows for that. So the request is that the City Council consider adoption of an ordinance amending the Tyler City Code Chapter Three by updating and amending provisions related to certification and assignment pay for firefighters. I also want to say, the money for this has already been approved in the budget. We just couldn't act on it until the ordinance is changed.
Is this one of those items that bypasses Civil Service Commission?
It, no, this, this is not required to go to Civil Service Commission. Yeah, we ran it through legal prior to coming here.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And congratulations on your Tower 10 truck. It's pretty.
Good.
All right. We're down to the consent agenda. Do we want to approve as presented?
Move to approve consent agenda as printed.
Second.
Motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A few items of note. The Legacy Trail Extension contract construction has started. So we're very excited about this. The Legacy Trail Extension was bid through Tech dot in August and awarded to THK Construction in the amount of $2.9 million. Construction COF meeting was held last Monday and construction began last week. The current contract schedule has the project being completed by July of 2024. The Legacy Trail Extension will construct a new trailhead at the future Stewart Park on Frankston Highway and provide a 12-foot wide hike and bike trail from up Old Noonday Road through Winters Park and terminated Pete Elementary over on Bellwood Road. So we're very excited about that, seeing construction getting started and that trail underway. So by next summer, we can be out there and the mayor will do a ribbon cutting by riding a bike right through, right?
Right.
There we go.
There's no slides on the trail.
No hands.
Even perfect.
Helmet. Is that it? Oh.
No, I had other items.
That was kind of a long pause.
I do want to brag about our solid waste park. I do want to brag about our solid waste part, yeah, that's, I sometimes unfortunately do it. So Solid Waste, they have their bi-annual Drive Cam Safety Award breakfast on Thursday, September twenty-eighth, before they kicked off and started their routes that morning. This is something that we do a couple of times a year, where they receive a reward, awards not only, for not only providing exceptional service to Tyler residents and commercial customers, but also having no incidents or risky driving behaviors from, and this one was periods from January two thousand and twenty-three to June two thousand and twenty-three. We have Drive Cams in each of our solid waste units that actually monitor risky driving behaviors, such as following distance, speeding, distracted driving, cornering, you know, braking, those type of things. And so we had a couple of, as far as our employees, who have done incredible work. Cameron Clayton and Kenneth Wooton had no incidents or risky driving behaviors for six months. Danny Glover, or Danny Garner, pardon, that's a different. Danny Garner.
He's probably a good actor, too.
Who's not an actor, but is an incredible solid waste truck driver. Charnette Butler and Marquise Johnson have no incidents or risky driving behaviors for a year, and Mike Williams and James Williams have no incidents or risky driving behaviors for two and a half years. And when you think about, these things are the size of tanks, they're driving down as far as city streets, cars parked on both sides, and the fact that these guys have as little accidents as they do is good for us, as ratepayers, is the, but also is incredible, just kind of testament to the hard work that these people do. So we're thankful for the commitment to safety and service they provide to us. Lieutenant, since we're bragging, Lieutenant John Thornhill, last week, or two weeks ago, he graduated from the two-hundred-and-eighty-seventh session of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. And so he spent ten weeks on advanced communication, leadership, and fitness training on behalf of the Tyler Police Department and himself there. He had a hundred-and-ninety-one law enforcement officers from forty-six states and District Columbia that he was participating with. And so we want to congratulate Lieutenant Thornhill on this achievement. I've spoken to those who've gone through this before, it is, it's, it is a very strenuous, both as far as mental and physical, that they go through, and the fact that, you know, he went through that and graduated as well as he did, speaks a lot about, or to Thornhill and about our Tyler Police Department, so we're very proud of that. And then finally, a brag moment on the mayor and the council. Last week, y'all attended the Texas Municipal League Annual Conference in Dallas, where you went through multiple sessions, brought back lots of work for city staff to start to kind of look into and start to try to figure out what we can put in application. And we, as staff, are very, as far as just appreciative of your commitment to continued education, to learning, to bettering yourselves, to better our community. That is a strong testament to each of you and your commitment to your constituents. So thank you for going through that and doing that.
Well, once again, we, we did have a full council at TML, and that does say a lot, because that's not always happened. And it's happened, and so thank you all for, for doing that. We'll say that a good time.
And I want to thank everybody for my celebration of my birthday.
Yeah, seem like. How many times have we, I mean, I think there was probably at least a dozen different groups singing.
It seems like it went on, it went on all week. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned.